Happy New Year to everyone who is joining us. It's a privilege for us to have the public participate in our meetings. And we're very pleased to have our very able and caring city council and our fantastic staff with us today. And so before we get too far into it, I'm going to ask our assistant city manager, Nat Rochanasa Thera, to explain to folks how this works. Probably many of you know by now because you're regular participants. But for those of you, or maybe this is the first time, or the first time you'd like to join us sharing some of your thoughts. If you'll just listen, we'll explain it to you and it also will be on your screen. So if it sounds like a lot of information coming out to you at once, it will be on the screen as well. So that being said, Nat, with you will go ahead, please, and share with the public how they can participate, then we'll call our meeting to order, please.
Super happy to do this, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to all. There are a couple of ways that members of the public can participate in city council meetings. One is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to call by, to join by calling directly into the meeting. We recommend that folks use the Zoom app function to join on your computer or on your smartphone. You can use the link that is listed at iSearchMonterey.org. And since the meeting has already started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. Folks can also join by telephone and you can do so by dialing toll free 833-568-8864. And then enter the meeting ID number, which is 1607729333. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, you can then press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. And here's how you can make public comments. If you're using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you've dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then unmute yourself again by dialing star six. You must do both if you're dialing in by telephone. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. We ask that public commenters please turn off all television or computer speakers or go to another room when you're connected by phone because background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. And we'll have a time limit for today's meeting and show a countdown timer on the screen. And the countdown timer will be accurate for those who are watching on Zoom. And we do ask that everyone stay within that time limit. This meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofmonterey. There's about a 10 second delay for that. And also on Comcast Channel 25 that has about 90 second delay. If you are planning on making a public comment, please join the meeting using the Zoom app or by telephone and join in time so that you can accommodate the delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving public comments this afternoon.
Good. Thank you so much, Nat. We appreciate that. And so we will call our meeting to order. And again, we're going to call on our most talented assistant city manager to show the flag, which is, I can see you've got that background, but we're going to do the pledge allegiance in a moment as soon as Nat can draw up the flag.
That's right. And actually Clementine, our city clerk, will be showing the video today.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Thank you Clementine. So if you will all join me in the pledge of allegiance, I appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic which stands one nation
under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Clementine, would you just take a moment to introduce our very caring city council members?
Certainly. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Councilmember Williamson, I believe, will be joining us soon. And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, and it's my pleasure to be here and thank everybody for the privilege of you sharing time with us. Before we go to public comments, this council meeting is a council workshop. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the format where we certainly want it to be formal and informal and have a lot of good discussion. And so we'll get into that just momentarily. On public comments, you'll have a chance, if you want to talk about the 96 programs that are currently undertaken by the city of Monterey and our staff, please wait. But these public comments would be anything not on our agenda and our agenda is really focused. So if you have other thoughts to share, to start off our new year in a really happy, positive way, we look forward to it. So Nat, do we have some folks who want to share some public comments within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey, not on the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have one hand raised so far and our public speaker will be Esther Malkin. So we'll go ahead and let Esther say a few words. Hi Esther, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. Nice to see you all.
Hi Esther.
I just wanted to comment on, we have, so our Parks Department staff has been so exceptional taking care of the needs of our park over here at Laguna Grande that I wanted to put a shout out there specifically to Ty's Norton. And I also wanted to bring up something, I literally just drove by and ran into him and our CAT members of the MPD. And they were cleaning up the, underneath the bridge that is on Del Monte coming into the city from Seaside. They were cleaning up the homeless mess over there in an area that is Caltrans responsibility. Now, I get the fact that, you know, our PD and our Parks people are great and they go above and beyond. But I somehow kind of feel like it's really not okay for Caltrans to rely on our people doing their jobs. And especially that job, you know, our, our people should be working on our city issues. And Caltrans shouldn't be allowed to use the excuse of having that, the shelter in place limit what they're supposed to be carrying on their end. So I wanted to bring that up and I wanted to suggest the possibility of them maybe using the crews that were recently used to clean up some brush over at the Laguna Grande Park to, to do that kind of work. Because I really don't like seeing our police department and our park staff doing that kind of, of work when, you know, they have other responsibilities that they're actually hired to do. So, but the main reason I was calling and I had planned on speaking to was just to give them a shout out. And I just drove by and saw them and had that, that thought as well. And secondly, I'm just curious, we have a restaurant in the city limits that is in the controversy of having a health permit revoked and still remains open. And there's been a lot of chatter on social media about that. And so who would be enforcing that? I get the fact that the health permit is probably county. But, I mean, other than a business license being pulled, nobody can really understand why they're even remaining open. Whether it's a health permit or a business license shouldn't matter. So maybe somebody can clarify that and I can pass it along to the posts on social media. Thanks.
Great. Thanks Esther. Our next caller here is somebody who's joined us by telephone and their last three digits is 802. Hi there. If you could, please be sure to unmute yourself and you'll do that by dialing star six and then we can hear you. There we go.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Nat. This is Frank Geisler, CEO of the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. And I wanted to wish everybody a peaceful and loving new year this year. Thank you for your, your service and your attention. This is a topic that was raised among our restaurant members at the chamber. I wanted to bring this over to you. Has to do with the third party delivery commissions. And those are commissions charged by the companies like DoorDash, Uber Eats, Grubhub, Postmates, et cetera. It amounts to sometimes 25 to 30% of the meal cost charged that is absorbed by the business. So while it makes sense, it makes good sense in the normal times when all fixed costs are covered by the business such as rent, insurance, labor, et cetera. And it also helps them to advertise their products. When none of those fixed costs are paid or very little, the 30% commission adds sole to the wound. So while we're not really an advocate for additional regulations on businesses in general, here, this is something that may make sense for the city council to discuss. And for a few reasons. Number one, there are many vendors in that industry. Each one has, has not changed their commissions over the last pandemic years, I mean, months. There are also many restaurants impacted. And also, let's not forget, multiple cities in the country have put a 15% cap on such charges. So here, a city ordinance would level the field and help our hospitality, small businesses. I just want to bring this over to you so you can maybe discuss at your convenience. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks Frank. We appreciate you calling in. And it looks like we have no other commenters on items that are not on today's agenda. Go back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks Nat. And we want to remind people that we appreciate their calls. And we have Esther's and Frank's contacts. So the questions that they brought up this afternoon, our very able staff will be getting back to you to answer the questions that you have. But according to the California State Brown Act, we can't discuss or take action on those time. But you will hear from us. I know it because I constantly refer things to staff. And they always respond in a very gracious, informative way. So you, you will hear from them. And we want to welcome council member Tyler Williamson, who's in the council chambers. How did you pull that one off?
Just for you, Mayor.
I'll join you. Okay. Let's take five. I'll be right there. Yeah, great seeing you. All right, let's go to, let's get on to our agenda here. And what would be my thought that as we go through this, we're going to have various presentations. And as I said on, let me quickly sit down here on the good old computer. And we're, we have 94 items that are currently being worked on by the staff in the city. And so we're going to be sharing some of those. And I should say our, our very creative staff is going to be sharing those shortly. And it's, I'm not going to get into too much of an introduction other than reminding everybody about Covey's quadrants of, that really helps in that there are four quadrants that Covey has identified. And it, this applies to the city, it applies to schools, especially as a retired school teacher. And that is the four quadrants are talking about what are your priorities? What are you trying to accomplish? And so the first quadrant is a level of importance and it's important and how important is it? And there's other things that are unimportant and how urgent are they? And so the various urgencies and priorities come into play. And so when staff has an opportunity to share the grid or the outline of the 96 signs, you'll see that they do have a ranking of, of importance. But everything's important and we know that. And most of all, my concerns are most important of all, right? For each of us, it's, our concerns, what our goals are become the most important thing. But we have to put this in the context of a limited amount of staff. You're, we've, we're down almost 75 staff members since the pandemic. When we passed Measure G and Measure Y, we promised the residents who voted for it, and thank you residents, that we were going to get our budget balanced and we were going to definitely take care of our municipal issues and municipal full focus and goals and concentrate on that because it's been quite a year. I don't know if all of you have heard, but all of the Christmas cards, yes, I still get Christmas cards. I'll show you what those look like someday. And every one of them starts with 2020. It's been, it was quite a year. Or it was the most unusual year we've ever had. And, and so there are so many demands on our staff and they, they respond to all of them. So as we go through, and I'll turn it over here very shortly to Hans. And I'm hoping we can have a discussion as we go along, rather than just have a report and then council questions and, and then a public comment and so on. Let's make this a discussion. Share with us your thoughts. Help give this incredible staff that we have the guidance that they ask for. And what a team. We have such a great team in the city of Monterey. And I'm very pleased that during the last election that was reinforced that we have a good team that puts the public first and our own interests second. Let's hope that's a message that reaches Washington DC sooner than later. I'll leave it at that. So Hans, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to all of you. And this is our first council meeting in the year 2021. But don't worry, we have 33 others scheduled right now for the remainder of 2021. And of course, there might be the one or the other that, that, that we will add to that list of, of council meetings. I wanted to, to use the opportunity to, to go over a few items before we actually start the update. If we can go to the next slide, please. We, we have a good tradition now about council workshops, holding them almost on a quarterly basis. And in October 2019, we had a council priorities exercise. You recall all that. We went, started the year 2020 on a, on a solid track. And then it all came differently than we expected. We went back in September last year to talk again about our city work program and showed you where we are. And again, a couple of months, a few, four months later, January 2021, we start off again with goals and priorities. And while we met a year ago at Hilltop Park, the pandemic changed the, the rhythm of our meetings and we are meeting now virtually. And we will, having now mastered the specific challenges that, that are coming through the pandemic and through the meeting procedures, we'll probably, we will have another workshop in spring 2021. And we'll focus probably then on our budget and on other topics that are then important. But it's, it's a good tradition now to go over the work program that we have in general. And with that, Nat, the next slide would be really awesome. Our, our slogan for the city of Monterey is under. And under, as we all know, stands for forward. And then we're very proud of that motto, under, go forward. But what, what we do with, with that is we go always forward. And we, we very, very seldom celebrate our accomplishment. We very seldom take the time out of our busy schedule and, and, and do the opposite, which, which one would say in Spanish, retrocede. Retrocede is the opposite of under and says basically, let's look back. And, and we wanted to, to take a moment and, and look back jointly with you, the council, and want to ask you, the council, to, to, to take a moment and look back at 2020 and, and share with us briefly what, what you feel was, was, went well, was successful. Because among the whole year of 2020, which was very challenging, there were many moments, I think, we, when we look back that, that we can be jointly proud of. And so I think it makes sense to, to, to look back into 2020. When we started 2020, we had a total different idea about the year, what we wanted to accomplish. And it got completely derailed. But not everything that happened in 2020, the work that we conducted jointly with our residents, with our staff, with the council, was, was, was just based on responses to the pandemic. There were other accomplishments, I think, that would be worthwhile if you, council could reflect on that. And then we will get to, to the department heads. We will ask the department heads, what do they foresee for 2021? What do they see is, are their top priorities for 2021? And you will hear also as part of that presentation from the affected departments, some ideas about the reopening. Because as you know, the parks and recreation the Parks and Recreation Director has, uh, most of, or all of her facilities now closed, uh, closed, including Veterans Campground, uh, that was closed as part of the stay at home order, uh, in late December. And we also, uh, you will hear from the Library Director about, uh, her ideas about, uh, the reopening of the library. And then last but not least, we'll look about the current city staff work program. And Mr. Mayor, uh, we will, uh, uh, show again that matrix that you just described to the city council that divides up between urgency levels and importance levels. And we will, we'll start with that actually, and then go over the city's, uh, current work program. And when you look at, at, at the attachment also that is, uh, part of our agenda report, please keep in mind that the number one to 94 really is, 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 is just a numeric number to make a reference where we are in that program, but you really see the priorities under the, um, definition for the importance level and the, uh, urgency level. That's, that's really where the gist is or where we see, uh, the, the, the priority, not in the numbers of the spreadsheet that the spreadsheet automatically assigns. So, um, with that, um, I would just, uh, ask you, the council, if you want to lead us off and, uh, want to talk briefly about what you felt went, went well. Um, we have always enough, uh, opportunities to hear what didn't go so well. But, uh, I think it would be, uh, appropriate just, just to look back at 2020 and, and from your perspective, what you feel was, uh, was an accomplishment, uh, what was an achievement? What, what were moments you, you can reflect, uh, back that, that, um, that, that were worthwhile mentioning tonight? And then with that, I'll, I'll pass it back to the mayor and if you ask him if he would kindly lead that conversation.
Good. Thank you, Hans. And I, I definitely appreciate that approach. And you have a very high achieving city council and a high achieving staff. And a lot of times it seems like that, uh, we're constantly having to just try to play catch up. And, and once in a while it's good to stop and, and, uh, say, look, the, the, we're all grateful to live in the city of Monterey. So this is a good opportunity. Anyone want to start us off and, and the city manager and the public are asking what you consider significant achievements and accomplishments this year? Now we'll start with Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. I'm just going to mention a couple because I'm sure our council members will, by the time we get to the end, uh, there will be, probably be talking about the same items. But to me, um, uh, probably, uh, the most important piece is that, uh, the staff's willingness and the city's willingness to balance a budget, especially in these really tough times. I know it's really hard to balance a budget when your revenues do not match your expenditures. So I'm very proud of the city, uh, that it, over the last, uh, eight to nine months, we have done our best to try and keep this, um, this boat afloat, I guess you could say. And that has a lot to do with cooperation, uh, between, uh, everybody that, that works for the city of Monterey, along with our own, our own, um, our own residential, uh, residents. So I mean, I, I think that's probably one of the biggest accomplishments that we have made so far. Cause I'm sure we're still a, a long way away, but I'm really happy with the way it, it's turned out so far. And then the last one, it's, it has the same thing to do with the staff. And that's the response to the city, the city's response to COVID-19. I think, uh, if you look at what other cities have done and what we have done, especially when it comes to business and renter relief, I think we were the leaders of the, of the, um, of the peninsula. And, uh, just today, I think it was 175, um, uh, updates that I saw. And I think that's amazing that we could, we could, uh, let our, let our residents know what's going on. So I'd say those two, for me, are probably the biggest.
That's great. Thank you, Dan. We wanted to hear from another council member, please.
I'll jump in, Mayor.
Oh, good. Hi, Tyler.
Hi. So, um, you know, I, I'm really much in alignment with, with what Dan said. And I, and I imagine that this is probably going to be a theme, but, um, uh, I, I think when we look at the year, obviously COVID dominated it. And I think that the way that the city generally handed, handled COVID, um, uh, like Dan said, it was far and in between from, I think, what we've seen across the rest of the peninsula. And so I'm really proud of, of the work that staff has done, um, particularly under Hans's leadership. And, and I've acknowledged this with, with Hans too, but the three-legged stool approach that, um, Hans came up with and, and then the rest of the staff has worked on, on supporting and executing, um, over the last several months has been, um, just stellar. So, um, when we look at the, the three-legged stool, it was, um, the big, the business grants, the stimulus program, um, the, the rental assistance, and then the adjustments to the budget. Um, and, and that included increases to revenue, but also budget cuts. So it was quite an extensive, um, and, and bold, uh, steps that we took. And I'm just really proud of was, was able to handle those. Um, and then as a separate bullet, you know, I think that the, the discussion of the budget deserves its own recognition and acknowledgement, um, in, in and of itself. I mean, the fact that we're, we're finding a way of, of staying afloat and continuing to have dialogues, um, as we go along here to look at what the future is going to look like and making adjustments, um, so that we can, um, uh, maintain proper, uh, budget is, I, I, I just think is, is an awesome achievement. Um, and, and then I would, I would just end with, um, you know, we're all going through really unprecedented times right now. So, um, you know, whether somebody wants to acknowledge it or not, life is difficult right now and it, and it has been over the last several months. And so if you're working on top of that, um, and you're, you know, putting yourselves in harm's way because you're having to interact with customers and, and other individuals, and you have to trust that hopefully they're, they haven't caught COVID themselves. Um, just the stress of all that, uh, I mean, and trying to take care of your family, um, is enough by itself. But our staff has acted as if nothing has, has happened. They're, they're working continuously hard and I'm just deeply appreciative as a citizen and as a council member, um, uh, of this city. Um, and, and I, I think this also goes for the staff that we had to lay off as well. I think that there just needs to be some level of acknowledgement that, um, that, you know, they're going through something. They're still part of our family and we're going to keep that in our minds about how we bring those positions back. Um, I, I know it hasn't been easy and you made a huge sacrifice for us. So that's, that's it for me.
Thank you so much, Tyler. Councilmember Ed, you wanted to shoot it?
You bet. Thank you very much. Uh, a couple of things are already up there, so I'll briefly touch on what I recognize. Uh, number one, I think it's the, the way our council and the leadership in the city worked through, uh, the workforce adjustments and the layoffs. Uh, that was, that was very hard and painful. But the way and manner it was, it was done with leadership, I felt was, uh, very, you know, if, if anything can be, uh, negative, it can be satisfied the way it's handled. And I think it was handled in, in a very professional and appropriate way. Um, and hard for all the staff that had to go through that. Um, number two is that, you know, we kept working. The city staff has continually worked in modified manners, even though some facilities may be closed. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes. And the number one thing that stands out there is that the community outreach that has continued with reaching out to folks that are seniors, shut-ins, people that frequently use the, uh, senior centers. Uh, you know, our staff really ratcheted that up. And so the customer care piece stands out for me. Uh, the outreach was phenomenal. Uh, community safety, uh, police and fire, uh, has continued to be, um, so very professional. Um, and also in the community, uh, safety category, the way our city leadership embraced, um, the community education about COVID awareness. Um, some of it was shut down, some of it was closures. But aside from that, as Dan mentioned, the number of, um, almost daily bulletins that have come out of the communications office, those things really matter. And that, that leads into the community safety and education. Uh, as we say, um, you know, in public works, I think promises made or promises kept. And I think that we made a promise to the community, uh, asking for them to pass tax measures in the past. Um, Public Works and all of our fine professionals helped us take a stance that, that we delivered on the promises. And our community is, uh, is very grateful of that. And I, I think I saw a number of the pavement index, uh, where we started and where we are now. And it's just phenomenal to look around our community and realize just a few short years ago, uh, we were in real trouble. And our community answered the call and taxed themselves and public works, um, through many, many contractors as well, uh, helped us keep that promise. And I, I really appreciate that. And in the people business, um, I personally say, and those around me say, it's mission first and people always. And I think that that's the thing that I'm most proud of is that our organization, the city of Monterey, um, lives by this and we keep going in spite of what's happened. Uh, the city is still functioning. Uh, it, it may not have as much money. There may not be as much open, uh, but we're still a very much thriving organization that is delivering, uh, the mission and taking care of people citywide. So much to be a proud, uh, proud of.
Great, Ed. Thank you so much. Alan, would you like to share some thoughts, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So a hundred percent agree with everything that's been said so far. So I won't repeat any of those, but I would add a few things. Um, first of all, would extend my appreciation to the, um, to the employees for also stepping up and helping us with our financial, um, our financial issue with their salary deferrals and, and, um, you know, salary reductions. So, uh, appreciate that. Also appreciate people's flexibility in adapting to different types of workload and different types of work, uh, due to COVID and how that affected our staffing. So, uh, I know, I see what you're doing and I appreciate it. Um, also wanted to thank our citizens for, um, supporting two ballot measures this year. Measure G, uh, which raised the, um, sales tax and Measure Y, which raised the hotel tax. And, uh, I just would note that that also did involve a fair amount of staff work and council work. And so I think we should acknowledge that. I think those two measures are going to set us up well for coming out of COVID-19 and, and for making the city strong in the future. Um, I also want to acknowledge, uh, our city management and our police department for the way they've hapled, ha- handled protests of various kinds this year. Um, free speech is very important. I'm glad that Monterey is a city where people can organize protests and do it safely. Um, you know, problems that we saw in other cities have not happened here. Whether that was, um, the way that Black Lives Matter protests were handled in some cities. I think our city staff did a really good job of allowing people to express themselves or whether it's other kinds of political engagement that in other places became violent and has not happened here. So kudos to our police department. Um, I would also like to acknowledge, um, the smart lights, the, the light sense, the, uh, sensing lights that we have installed, which are really improving traffic. And, um, I think that a few years ago was one of the number one concerns of the public. And as we are implementing these new traffic lights, I think it's making a huge difference. And then the last thing I would add that I think hasn't been mentioned, and again, in a normal year, this would have just been a really big thing, but the acquisition of the old Capitol site. Again, a lot of staff work went into that. And, um, a lot of work has already been done in terms of making the site fire safe, um, for our community. And I know more work will happen in the future as we try to figure out, uh, how we're going to develop that as a park. But, um, thank you very much to everybody who works in the city. And thank you to all of the residents for collectively making this a great place to live.
Good. Thanks, Alan. That was just great, uh, pretty, great input. And I, I'll just reiterate what so many of you have said. And just, um, with this new world, I, I think it's good to acknowledge that we're doing so many Zoom meetings. And so the ability to adapt to online meetings, distance learning for all the teachers out there. The whole, um, idea of how do you interact with people? The city's been, I think, at the forefront of making sure that people can work from home and stay safe. Safety has been really important. Uh, Hans has been a leader on the peninsula for keeping us safe. As you know, it's such a moving target because the rules are constantly changing. We go from tiers to percent of uh, ICU rooms to regions changing. And so it's been a real challenge. And I think, uh, the city has been in the forefront of keeping people safe all the way to the number of masks. In fact, I saw someone without a mask today and it shocked me because there's so much compliance in our city for masks. And our city was hit harder than most because you take a look at what has been closed. Our Recreation Department, which has done a lot of online and outreach. We have a closed conference center, obviously. Monterey Sports Center, another closed facility. And so these facilities that we value so much got especially hit hard. And of course, the Hotel Motel tax, the budget that plummeted 20%. And through it all, I think, um, essential services have been delivered to the people of Monterey. So they do understand that, uh, the staff is extremely responsive. I've had the opportunity to interact, as you have, with various organizations from the chamber, from the community foundation, Fisherman's Wharf. All along, the whole emphasis has been collaborative and cooperative. Get the players together, work together, so we can come to mutual solutions. And so that is, uh, to me, a, a very important outreach that the city has done. And finally, just talk about the Monterey Way. We have a good team. Oops. Another accomplishment is to try to keep my dog quiet. Oh, well, there she goes. Nobody's sneaking up on the mayor's house, I can tell you that. But the Monterey Way, uh, through it all, I really value the fact that we can disagree. You all helped me grow. I think probably the last, since I came back in 2014, I would say the COVID crisis, the climate crisis, the economic crisis, the social justice crisis. How we've met all those has helped me to, to grow. And that's very important because I've always thought there's two things we do in life. We either continue on our journeys and we grow, or we regress. And that means the status quo doesn't exist. So we can't stand still is the point. And so I, uh, really appreciate the camaraderie. All of my colleagues who've challenged me have, uh, stretched the way I look at the world. So I really value that from our staff, our citizens, our neighborhood associations, our business associations. So let's continue to grow together. Hans, let's go to our next section, please. And by the way, I think you got the impression that you're all appreciated.
Yes. And, and before I do that, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I, I want to thank you, um, and the, the city council for, uh, the hard work that, that you put in, uh, for the support and for always, um, uh, I, I use this word not blithely, uh, in, in many times, but adding a lot of value to, to our technical recommendations or to our staff work. Um, I always feel at the end of this process that we walk away. I always feel at the end of this process that we walk away with something that has been approved significantly, sometimes a little bit on the margins, but sometimes you you bring the extra value to 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 our work that that makes it so much better to implement and also that adds the respect for diversified opinions into topics that that only council members who are connected with residents can bring and can see. And I think we have a great partnership in that. And last but not least, all the work is 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 being done by our staff and and you are absolutely correct in acknowledging our staff and I want to acknowledge the staff as well. This morning, I started off the day by by telling the staff that for 2021, what I want staff to do also is to to realize that we all have only one tank of energy that we are using. And we have really burned through 2020 in a lot of ways. There were many, many weekends that staff worked through weekends to deal with the crisis du jour, including a fire that was threatening the outskirts of the city of Monterey, including tax measures that that we had to figure out over weekends of how we draft certain languages, many other legal issues that that we we had to figure out in order to come prepared to you then the following Tuesday. So this is a this is a great, great team effort that was done by by all our team members and my 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 request to our team as well as to you is be very much aware of that we are having only one gas tank, we have only one reserve, consciously work on the work that you are doing, but equally consciously try to find the time to de-stress and to do to do the right thing for yourself once in a while and take take meaningful breaks because this is still a race we are in. And it's 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 challenging on on a multitude of levels and it's mentally very straining. So thank you for acknowledging all that and I want to pass this on to our excellent staff. And with that, I can go to to the next item, which is introducing to you the department heads' priorities in 2021 and the reopening strategies. And as always, I am asking our department heads to be conscientious of time. We want to hear back from from the council members as well. Every single department head can talk about one slide, one bullet point for at least half an hour. So we want to keep this very, very minimal today as well. And with that, next slide, please. For me, it will remain, of course, the the work as the city manager is kind of conducting this great orchestra that we have and ensuring that we are hitting all the right notes. But nevertheless, three priorities that I foresee is still being engaged in the COVID-19 response. This has shifted now a little bit into looking out for vaccinations, helping us to figure out how do we get the vaccinations here into our city because everything depends on the vaccinations, including, of course, sustainability of our economy here in Monterey. We we need to bring back to you a budget that is balanced. Councilmember Smith talked about $3.7 million that 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 we will have already identified as an additional deficit. So fiscal recovery, financial stability remain on the forefront for us. And we are working already on the conference center reopening plan. We we have interest for for the conference center. We are selling the conference center for 2022, 2023, et cetera. But we we still hopeful that we might have some action, some business in the conference center for the second half of 2021. So that will remain a part of our program. And with that, next slide goes to Nat.
With the shared screen, it likes to, as a system, I have a hard time finding an unmute button sometimes. So, you know, a couple of things, other parts of the city manager's office, as you may recall, we had a reorg as part of the COVID-19 related budget changes. City Clerk's Office and Information Systems was brought into our office. Community Outreach continued. Our focus in 2021 will be unveiling, you'll see in a few days, a new virtual public engagement platform we're calling Have Your Say Monterey. And this will support a way for citizens to not only be informed, but also give feedback, take surveys, ask questions about relevant topics such as cannabis, which we'll be unveiling later this week. And and also, one of the other goals as part of our Community Outreach efforts will be to unveil a new website that we will be building and working with our city staff on. This digital, as you know, engagement isn't our only priority within Community Outreach. It's also engaging with the public in person, obviously very hard to do due to COVID these days, but continues to be a priority as well as our media relations efforts and continuing the the initially daily media calls to the the calls that we hold twice a week. On the information systems side, project implementation and security continues to be a focus for the work group. There are dozens of critical projects that help support the unique software that our various departments require. And you'll hear from department heads and you'll you'll see that technology product related projects are weaved into many of the priorities that our department heads have are are going to share with you today. And it requires the support from the ISB team. And also, the increase in security threats continues to 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 hit us and we need to adapt and we have been adapting and kudos to the the technology team as we focus on cybersecurity and also maintaining some of the end of life technology systems like servers and other network infrastructure that are that do need to be replaced on an ongoing basis. In the City Clerk's Office, the retention schedule is being reviewed. That is one area of focus. We completed the election, but retention schedule and document management is is a focus and a priority for us. That's our highlight for City Manager's Office and pass it on to Chrissy.
Our primary objective is to provide sound legal advice and assist in problem solving. That is the main goal of your in-house law office. And really, the goals and objectives of the City Attorney's Office should reflect the priorities of the city council and the city departments. So the city council's list and the city department list, all those things on there are also on our list. And it's our goal to make sure that we can provide legal representation in those matters and advice to help lawfully attain those goals and minimize any risk to the city. So whether it be creating a face mask ordinance that's enforceable with more restrictions on the wharf than under state law, we're on it, we've got you covered, tenant protections, tax measures, you name it. If it's a priority for the council and for staff, it's our priority as well. And we maintain this while at the same time juggling the external forces that are beyond anyone's control. We can't prevent lawsuits from being, people from suing the city, we need to respond to those. We need to stay on top of changes in the law. So those are external forces that also dictate our priorities. But it is our pleasure to continue working on all these challenging and exciting issues. This is such an exciting city and it's our pleasure to help.
Nat, before you go on, I'm just going to encourage the council, if you have any questions as we go along, please just feel free to ask them rather than just wait at the end just to encourage dialogue. So we had the City Manager's Office, City Clerk's Office share with us and the City Attorney's Office share with us. So just jump in if you wish. And if not, we'll just keep going ahead. So Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the good work that Chrissy in her office does and I really appreciate those times when we have the structured legal updates. I know it's sometimes it winds up falling off to being extended. So I want to just make a commitment, Chrissy, that we give you more time in 2021 for some of those legal updates that are so very important. It just seems like sometimes when we look back, we put you in a position where it's had to be disjointed. And I want to see if we can't manage our schedule a little bit better to to be a little little more organized for our legal updates and give you a little bit higher quality of time so we can stay on top of all the important moving parts that come out of your office.
If I could just add to Ed's comments, I think part of the reason why we almost, I think, take it for granted, take you for granted because your office just does such great work and and we really just trust and align with a lot of the decisions that and recommendations that that your office gives. So not to say that Ed's comment doesn't have merit, I think it completely does. And I think us making sure that we dedicate more time to those is an important element, I think, an important goal for the year.
Thank you both for your comments.
That's a good point. And just for the public watching, the the amount of of legal work that a city has to do is really amazing, from reviewing all of the agendas, contracts, leases, and just the incessant, we live in a litigious society, unfortunately, and so we're constantly bombarded by lawsuits and frivolous things. And it's it's a really monumental task, things that are done in closed session mostly. And so it's really hard to understand or appreciate what a challenge that is. And our office, City Attorney Office, does such a great job with that. Keeps us out of the headlines. There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to our next slide, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor. The Community Development Department, I think the word for this year has been innovation. We've really restructured the housing planning and building offices in our operations. Housing has been primarily focused on preventing homelessness. And I just want to point out, our emergency rental assistance program that many of you mentioned, we are at a critical point. We have issued, as of this week, will be $626,000. $135,000 in checks will be issued this week. We've responded to 150 inquiries in the past two days for emergency rental assistance. So we are dedicating staff resources to that effort. The council also wanted us to pursue all state housing grants that were available as a result to the emergency situation. The City of Monterey has been awarded all four housing grants that were available on the state level. It's about $500,000. And our job will be this next year to work with our council on execution of those grants. It'll include efforts like updating our housing element. We issued an Affordable Housing RFP for city sites. We'll be bringing the results of that to the council in the first quarter. And we will, we've been working extensively on updating our ADU ordinance, the Planning Commission held sessions in November and December. Just a moment for planning and building, you need to understand that we've transformed our operations from complete paper operations to online permitting and plan review during the last eight months. And I want to acknowledge our staff and all of the efforts that have gone into transforming plan review as well as support from the Information Services Department. Current planning, we continue to process all of our current planning applications. This next year, you will see Garden Road Housing be in the review of those plans and entitlements be at the forefront of our review. The Building Department has its normal thousands of permits that they are reviewing and issuing and doing normal inspections. But I do want to point out two very large projects under construction. The Breast Care Center out in Ryan Ranch, which will offer start to finish breast care services to our community, as well as the Ohana Project will go into construction in the first quarter. That project's in excess of about $30 million. Property management, we will really be shifting from Wharf Two leasing to Wharf One leasing. So we look forward to that in this next year. In terms of sustainability, we will be looking at EV charging and solar installations predominantly on our parking garages. In addition, the one last thing I want to mention, state law has a new law, SB 1383, which requires a whole new effort towards organics diversion. So it'll be equal to the transformation that happened probably 20 or 30 years ago with recycling. It'll be all about organics recovery and reuse into different products, energy through, you know, decomposition and reusing organic material. So thank you very much and we look forward to continue to serve our community.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, please, Alan.
Yeah, Kim, thank you for for that report. On the EV charging stations, I've heard from folks in the sustainability community who say that basically by the end of this decade, there won't be any internal combustion cars anymore. And that in order to kind of make that happen, we really need to move fast in transforming our infrastructure to to, you know, just like what what you talked about with EV charging stations. I guess my question is, is there anything that we can do to either augment what we're already doing or accelerate that? And have we been in, have we been working with the Central Coast Community Power to see if they can provide funding? Because I know that their programs allocate a fair amount of money to that to that very goal. So anything you could could expand on as far as that goes?
So in terms of EV charging, we are working sort of on a project basis right now. We've been looking at our waterfront parking lot as well as the parking garages and doing analysis predominantly with our Public Works Department on energy supply and ability. I do think there's an opportunity, although we haven't started it yet, if we had more time, I would really like to see an EV charging strategy be developed for our community. Due to staffing resources, we haven't initiated that yet, but I can see that as efforts, you know, as opportunities come about.
One one last thing I would just share with you and and with the rest of the staff to be cognizant of, in conversations I've had with people, there are a lot of people who would like to buy an electric vehicle, but if they live in an apartment, it can be really difficult because most apartment complexes are not set up to allow them to charge at home. So I don't know how we address that, but I think if we do get into developing a strategy or a plan, as you say, that's something we have to think about.
You know, on that, Alan, that would be a good challenge to property owners, just sit down and ask how they can make that happen as well.
Right. And I don't know if there would be a way for us to perhaps incentivize that by offering some kind of a rebate or some kind of a grant that would maybe match their investment or provide some assistance because it is very expensive, but it is something that I think is very important and that, you know, as as we move forward in the next decade, we really have to be proactive about.
Yeah, you're right. And then the second part of that sustainability is solar. We're obviously with the COVID crisis, we've got solar panels and so on on hold, but that's something I'm looking forward to us pursuing when when we get back to the new normal. Again, it's one of those things is how much can we pile onto a city that's in crisis? And so I want to be careful that we don't do that, but we still need to keep our eye on the climate warming, one of those four crises I talked about, probably the one that can't be delayed. That's the one we have to address immediately.
Before we go on, oh, go ahead, Tyler.
No, I was just going to add to your comment, Alan, in to the extent that not just at people's homes or rentals, you know, whatever, as far as resident living, but I think also at businesses as well where people work because it's easy for people to plug in while they're working during the day. And so that way, maybe they can get a full charge and be able to commute. Some, you know, some people commute further distances, so it might help with that with that movement. Just kind of wanted to bookend that comment you made.
That's a good idea.
If I can comment on that too, I agree with you, Alan, that the probably electric cars are the future, there's no question about that. So maybe it's something that that can be phased in, we can have a timeline that by 2030, all housing permits or building permits, you need to have some type of of electrical EV hookup. Maybe you couldn't do it now because it's probably too expensive, but at least down the road. it's probably too expensive, but at least down the road, you could see in 10 or 15 years, or even five years, that that's part of our requirement for a property expansion of some type.
So great point, Dan. One other thing before we move on. So regarding the Garden Road Housing, and maybe if I could just expand beyond that, for the public, one of the issues our city is running into is water. And we're kind of in a double bind where on the one hand, the state's telling us to build housing, and this council has, I think, and the staff taken a lot of actions to pursue housing. But on the other hand, we're being told water that's been conserved, or even perhaps converting a commercial to housing, which has been one of our strategies, may not be acceptable by the state water board. And I think that this is something that maybe we as a council need to address and take a position on in terms of some sort of a resolution to the state. So I just wanted to share that. I have talked with the city manager about that.
If I could just, go ahead, Dan.
If I can just comment on that, maybe this council just needs to take a position on water as general, in general, where we're going to get, our plan to get new water, or where it's going to come from, because that's without, without water, we're not building anything. So maybe we should just take a, take a stance on it somewhere along the line. Sorry, Alan.
Sure. But I think what I'm, where I'm coming from is, we've radically reduced the amount of water that we draw from the Carmel River, but the state seems to be saying, no, that's not, that's not new water, so it doesn't count. Or even in cases where we're converting water use from commercial to residential, and the water use is the same, and for them to say, no, that's not okay, I've got a real problem with that. And it just feels like they're putting up roadblocks to us accomplishing what they say they want us to do and what we want to do as well.
But along with that, Alan, is the overdrafting of the seaside basin. I mean, we can get into that discussion, but I mean, that's another problem. That's just like the Carmel River. So eventually, you're going to have to have new water somewhere along the line, even to make the seaside basin healthy. So it's beyond that. But I do understand what you're saying, because there is water to be, to be used.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Ed.
I don't want to go too far into the water discussion, because we do want to keep moving along. But I do want to encourage members of the council and the public to reread the California Water Resources Judgment 9510, because it contains a lot of the reasons why they are saying the drawdown from the Carmel Valley River is not water that can come to cities as a resource, because it's an overdraft order. So I just would encourage all to read that former document published, and I think in 95, and the sustained judgment from Water Resources, they gave us a five-year extension. We're past that, January 2021. So don't expect another extension. So there are grave consequences coming in the next one to two years if we don't increase the volume of water available to the water supplier. So it's not going to go away, and we are going to relive this until we have a new source of water. So I just want to leave you with the thought that everybody needs to reread that document to get up to speed, because we desperately need a new source of water. All cities do. And by getting off of the Carmel Valley River, that's not a transfer. There's already an overdraft there. So that's not new water. So we're not talking about grave expansions of uses. We're talking about infill, which is going to give us the housing, such as the Garden Road project. So we need a new source of water, and we have to look to the California Coastal Commission's eventual ruling that'll probably take place within the year, or ultimately may wind up being in court. So it's very, very complex, as you all know. But to get more water, it means we have to have more supply.
Yes. And Ed, you think that a water issue is going to end up in court?
Oh, I guarantee it. I will bet on it.
I'm not taking that bet. Not even a cup of coffee on that one.
Yeah. But from a general statement, I concur with Dan and others that I think as a, as a city council, we should have a policy in terms of the desire and the need for, the recognition of, that we do need additional water for our projects for the housing relief. The bottom line of that is, how are you going to recommend we're going to get it? We're not going to agree on that. But as a city council, we should have a policy that says additional water is a high priority for us.
Yeah, sure.
Mayor, Tyler?
Yes, I just have a general statement. But I think Kim and her team deserve a lot of credit, because a lot of these things that we're talking about that has been direction given by council is being put on their team, and they're stretched. So recognizing that they've lost staff and with staffing issues within, within the department, and recognizing that these big hitters that we've been discussing on the council, and then also recognizing all the work that they're doing on a regular basis with the Architecture Review Committee, with the Planning Commission, there's a lot of work going in and out of that office. And I just kind of wanted to take the moment to give appreciation for Kim and her team for everything that they do.
No, Tyler, you're right about that. If you go over the list of 94, the Community Development Department probably has their hands in about 33 quarters of it. So you do have a big job, Kim, and you and your department. And you're doing, I think you're doing a great job.
Yes. And Kim, you can bet on, we're going to add on to it as well. So something to look forward to.
Thank you for your comments. I'll make sure to share them with our staff.
Yeah. Okay, good. And really, thank you, everybody. I'm really enjoying this interaction as we discuss each element, exactly what I was hoping this workshop would do, to reflect the good work that's being done and giving direction. I think that's what we're being asked to do. I really appreciate it. All right, Hans, let's start. Are we ready for the next department?
Yep, Lauren's next.
Hi, Council and members of the public. Our department in finance and accounting is really to help the city oversee our accounting, our internal controls, our financial reporting, and transact the finances of the city. Importantly in this role, our department is also focused on the strategic planning for the finances of the city, midterm, short term, and long term. So the first bullet point we have here pertains to the fiscal recovery and the sustainability of the city, getting ourselves out of COVID. But also keeping an eye on our midterm solutions and long-term solutions, because we have a lot of important priorities that need to be funded. And as the public and the council has saw in the last couple of years, we focus on a myriad of opportunities to balance our budget and look at strategic planning holistically. In 2021, we'll continue to look at revenue opportunities. We need to focus on Measure Y to implement it, in particular, the online travel company component. We need to look at updating our fees and capturing new fees. We need to continue to do our good work in terms of public outreach, our compliance audits, and focus more energy on collections. Importantly, as we shift with COVID and working remotely, one thing it definitely highlights is our need to continue to improve our process and our technology. So to that end, in February, we will be launching a procurement process, an e-bidding system, that will enable us to do our procurement electronically. So those are three areas we're going to focus on in 2021.
Mayor, if I, if I may?
Yes, please.
Hi, Lauren. Thanks for, for the quick bullets there. I'm wondering, there are expenses that we, we know are coming, but I don't think we're, we completely are taking full recognition that they exist and that they're real. And so one of the ones that I think about, and there's some acknowledgement of it, right, we agreed to do this because of COVID, but I think of the account that we have for replacing vehicles. But even before COVID hit, there wasn't enough funding going into that. And so that's just an example of, I think, the point that I'm trying to make. It, it makes me think of the phrase, we're kicking the can down the road. And, and this is just an example of, I think, many different areas where this, I can think of many of the maintenance expenses that we have for many of our facilities. Is there a way that we can work in some kind of program that recognizes, that shows staff, the council, and the public what those kind of costs are, and we can observe how those change over time and how that kind of maybe continues to balloon, which is an assumption on my part. But I imagine that those costs are ballooning, and we're completely ignoring them. Is there a way that we can capture that and, and display that so that it can be visually understandable?
So one of the things, one of the projects we were working on with the city manager's office before the holiday break was developing a five-year fiscal model. It's a part of our budget process, so I don't want the public to think that we don't do this on an ongoing basis. But we are making the model a bit more robust and more comprehensive to incorporate challenges and issues and initiatives like what you're highlighting. So we can consider different options and different levers in the model. So in this next budget round, we could have a discussion as to what this strategic planning involves, what is, what are some of our assumptions in that regard. So then that way, we know going into it, our planning horizon for vehicle, for, for concerns about maybe even affordable housing or facility replacements and repairs. I think that's very important as we look at a five-year horizon. So it's not just 2021 or 2022, but three to five years out.
No, that sounds perfect. It would be great to hear how that goes as, as you all move along with that. But thanks for that. I'm glad to hear that's already in the works.
Yeah, Tyler, that's, that's really a good point that you brought up with Measure G. When it passed, I think that was going to take care of our city essential services. But Measure Y, again, getting back to whatever the new normal is, Measure Y, in my thinking, is that's where we're going to get the funds for the infrastructure, as you have pointed out, that we have been kicking down the road so many years. And most businesses put aside a 5% capital improvement every year. A hotel does that. So like on a conference center, you don't have to wait 40 years, and all of a sudden float a $60 million bond. The money's in the bank. And so going forward, I think, it seemed like our finance department report was short. Well, we spend almost a great majority of our meetings, that city council meetings, talking about the budget. And it's time to get our aging infrastructure taken care of. We have a tunnel, we have a library, we have a sports center that's, what, 25 years old now. All of our recreation centers are aging. City Hall, the, we've taken care of roads, fortunately, with Measures PNS. But we definitely have to build up a capital improvement and maintenance fund. And it's my hope that Measure Y, that increase in Measure Y is going to help us deal with that sooner than later. So it's good to have a plan. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Could I comment on that?
Yes, Alan.
Yeah. So for the public, again, thank you for supporting Measure Y. And we hope that that will allow us to bring back some of our city programs and services sooner than later that were cut by COVID. But once we do return to normal, I think that it is the intent of council that we apply at least some of those monies to some of these long-range liabilities and infrastructure needs. And I guess my question to Lauren is, I mean, hopefully that will be reflected in the five-year plan. But would it make sense at some point for the council to, to pass some sort of policy identifying, you know, we've got things, for example, that allocate a certain percentage of our hotel tax to, to various things, to advertising for the hotels, as well as for, would it make sense for us to, to, to consider allocating a certain percentage at a certain point in the future going forward for infrastructure? What are your thoughts on that? I guess what I worry about is that it sort of gets lost in the wash. And I don't think that was the intent of, come to the vote.
Right. What I do appreciate about the city is that our conversation, in every incremental fiscal presentation and discussion we have with the council and the public, we learn and we evolve our thinking and develop our ideas. So I don't want to give a precise answer to that idea. I think it's a great idea. I think what we should do is put together some of these initial assumptions and scenarios, see how the numbers play out, and start incorporating these ideas and determine if and when is the appropriate time to develop some of these more finite policies. Because with those policies, you probably also want like a roadmap to say, this is the policy, and we want to achieve it within three or five years. And that discussion, I think, really needs to be comprehensive, balancing other funding needs as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I, I have one comment. Not so much a comment, but a question. Lauren, on Measure Y and Measure G, are those unrestricted funds? Or do we, is it outlined in the measure that we have to spend those in certain areas? I can't remember if that, they were unrestricted.
I'll speak to them separately. Measure G is the sales tax that is general fund. Measure Y was a special tax, because 16% of it went to NCIP. So to extend the 16% went to the NCIP that is restricted, the other 84% comes to the general fund. So that portion of Y is unrestricted.
Guess we can spend it on any, any areas we'd like to. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ed, please.
Yeah, just all great comments, and really appreciate the depth of what we're dealing with. But I just, I know that we've got other people that are watching in the citizens group and associations, as well as business owners. But not lost on us all collectively, I know, is that we struggled with the 31, well, north of $31 million deficit over two budget years due to COVID. That's a massive hole. We're not out of it yet, and we can't count on a quick return for TOT. So we have to look to the projections of how fast the TOT will return. Group sales is very, very important, and that's probably going to lag behind to be a fully active conference center. So a full recovery of TOT, who knows? The latter part, the fourth quarter of 2022, I hope it's earlier. But I think these are conversations we'll have to have in terms of where we put allocated CIP money for, as example, the conference center. As things rebound, I would be in favor of being careful with our reserves, because we're going to have a drawdown of our reserves. So I think we have to look at the reserves and what's trending and tracking on the returns for our revenue. And then start to talk about how do we possibly take a little seed money and get it into the, the bank account for the reserves building for the conference center and, you know, the library. And there's so many other places that we have to start saving for building replacement and renewal. But we're on the track of having a big hole to cover. We got through our balanced budget this year. Mid-year, we got a little bit more, probably coming from the reserves. So it's great to think about it, but we can't make any decisions yet. We have to get through this hole and get revenue back up where it needs to be. And then I think we can start talking about long-term, normal budget years, and then we can start saying, what's the priority of saving reserve money so that we can replace or renew our buildings? So just a long, a long-term view. I am positive, I'm not trying to rain on the ideas, but I'm a realist, knowing that we, let's see some evidence and data and tracking that shows we're into recovery.
Yeah, that's a good point. And we have to recover before we can move on, without question.
Right.
Okay, great. Another excellent discussion. Let's continue to our next department, please. Thank you, Lauren.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and Happy New Year to all of you.
Same to you.
In the Fire Department, as with everywhere else, we're kind of having to be agile as the world changes around us. And my priorities kind of reflect that. One is in personnel. We've lost some admin staff. And so and and our workload has shifted substantially with with the with the changing world. And so finding different ways to to be able to squeeze more out of the blood out of the turnip, I guess, to to become more effective and efficient with with the staffing that I have available and and deal with the things that we need to deal with. COVID certainly has put a lot of pressure on the personnel in the fire department. And as you have heard from Hans, we have started a vaccine program, actually. We're the only fire department at this time in Monterey County that actually has been authorized to receive and administer the COVID vaccine. And we've, by the Thursday of this week, we should be done with the majority of our personnel and getting them vaccinated. But that has now introduced a whole new program in the fire department. And we intend to continue to do that so that we can get our law enforcement personnel and possibly then move on to other city employees and possibly even the public so we can help with the rollout of this phenomenal vaccination program that that we've got daunting us in this country. In fire prevention, our world has changed a bit too, both with COVID and the changing business environment. We've had a lot of new issues and challenges with outdoor dining, and that's going to resume once the county lets us go back to doing outdoor dining. And and so we need to continue to be prepared to help our businesses stay viable in that changing environment. And then, of course, we're at the tail end of of the most significant wildfire season that this state has ever faced. And and certainly, it's something that we need to stay on top of in our community as well. And and not only in making sure our community is safe, but continuing to be prepared to to help out our our neighbors throughout the state. We're also heavily involved in planning processes. We are right now finalizing the details of the contract so that we can initiate our Community Risk Assessment Standards of Cover Study that was authorized by the council through the contract with our with our firefighters. And we're at the tail end of doing the multi-jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'm hoping to get started very soon on doing a Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And so there's many of these things that are that are in the works. And we have some plans that we have to work on with with our planning department as well. And then the last thing is kind of addressing exactly what the council member Williamson brought up, and that is the continuing infrastructure challenge that we face. We were very blessed that you authorized us to purchase two engines this last year. We'll take delivery of those probably late February, early March, and are looking forward to that. But we don't want to just then start continuing to kick the can down the road. We need to keep looking at how do we continue to keep our fleet and our stations current and and in good repair so that they remain reliable and useful resources for us. But that's about what I've got for you.
Okay, I just, I just have one thing, if I may, Mayor.
Please start us off, Tyler.
Fire Chief, I'm just hoping that you could enlighten, I think maybe more so the public. I think this, the council's gotten a little bit of an update. But regarding our firefighters in COVID and and getting vaccinated.
Yeah, we we certainly can do a better outreach on that. I know that the county has also been very remiss that they did their initial vaccinations of EMS providers in 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 complete secret. And we have been reaching out to the media and sharing it with the community. But we'll continue to make efforts in that in that realm, too.
Chief, let me ask, it's it's kind of miniscule, but it's something we always are hearing all the time. And that is, as we do, go into our green belts, and there's been a lot of removal of debris and clearing of fire hazards. Skyline is one example in which people do drive there a lot. And you see a lot of logs. And people are saying, well, aren't those logs hazardous? Why are the logs there? Why are they left? And I know PG&E does some work too. And unfortunately, when PG&E contracts, the the work that's done is, it's very poor, frankly, by whoever they hire to do do clearance, they leave leave a mess. It's like chase, it's like chasing the proverbial one leaf with a leaf blower. They'll come in and they'll snip one branch and say, oh, you're clear now. So the whole idea of the debris removal, it's a top priority of the neighborhoods. Could you talk a little bit about green belt clearance and why are the logs left there? Because people are always asking.
Yeah, we, naturally, we work very closely with our forester, Justin Proudy, because he is the expert in in forest health. And you're correct in stating that sometimes when when our partners like PG&E come through and do their work, they they don't do an adequate job of cleaning up. And we typically will get after them and and make them finish the job. The part of it, though, is is the forest health. And and the natural ecosystem has dying and decaying materials in it as well. And if we were to remove everything, then the the soil wouldn't get replenished with the nutrients that those decaying, you know, the decaying vegetation leaves behind. So we like to leave vegetation behind. The logs are also great homes for for small animals and bugs and beetles, which feed the bird population, et cetera, et cetera. So it's all part of the whole natural cycle. And just like when you go to light a fire in your fireplace, you don't put a big log in there and take a match to it. It, you you won't get it to light. You put the little kindling in underneath and and get a get a fire lit that way. So if we remove the kindling, then the logs don't pose a huge risk in in the in the green belt spaces for for fire propagation or initiation. And so it makes sense to leave those behind so that we can also take care of that, the the forest health side of the equation.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief at this point? Okay, you got off easy, Galens.
Thank you.
We'll catch you later. All right, let's go ahead, Hans. Next department, please. We've got about 28 minutes, and we're going to make it. Okay.
The next one is our esteemed Human Resources Director, Allison Hart.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So our department obviously continues to oversee benefits, recruitment, workers' compensation, labor relations, employee relations, our safety program, and other programs. But like many other departments, two major issues of 2020, major but different issues, the COVID pandemic and social justice issues have really created new programs and policies and objectives for the HR team. And that's going to continue to guide our work into 2021. We will continue to oversee our COVID-19 Prevention Plan. We have implemented some new laws as of just last week that were effective January 1st, some new regulations that came out in November. We monitor and oversee every exposure and every positive case, quarantine and things like that at the city. So we will continue to do that to keep our employees as safe as possible through this pandemic. And then diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. We are really excited to be able to kind of dive deep into this this year with creating a committee across the city that will help us review our policies, our programs. We are going to create citywide training with the new, we just picked our consultants, Circle Up Education, really dynamic group that has provided training for a lot of other cities in California. I'm very excited for us to launch that training very soon. It's also going to help us guide what, reviewing our performance management system, making sure that we're not only being diverse, but also inclusive with our staff, reviewing our policies on hiring and discipline to make sure it's transparent, and also with an eye towards diversity, equity, and inclusion. And finally, our recruitment practices and policies. Not only are we wanting to do an outreach to be be diverse and inclusive city, but also when we hire and bring people in, how are we bringing them in? Are we doing it in a way that's inclusive and equitable? So we will be kind of looking at all of our policies and programs with an eye towards that kind of DEI initiatives as well. And those are our two main objectives for 2021.
Good. Councilmember Dan.
Thank you. So what, I'm very curious about the committee that you're creating. Is that a big committee within our own employees? Or is that a committee that will, will the residents be able to get involved in that committee? Or who who is the committee, I guess I want to say?
The one that we're, I mean, we haven't actually completely designed and developed it right now. We're, we just hired our consultants. Actually, we haven't really hired them yet. I just sent them the draft agreement. So we're going to have them help us guide how we're doing that. We just want to make sure that it's not something that's just sort of coming from the HR team. And this one is really looking internally at our staff, so it's not at city programs. This is our internal hiring practices, performance management practices. Are people feeling like they are included and able to give feedback and things like that? So it's really going to be focused on our employees internal to the city.
Okay, that that answers my question. So it's it's not going to be a community committee. It's going to be an internal committee, I guess. Thanks.
Mayor, a question?
Yes, please.
So I'm wondering, how do awards fit into the discussion? And maybe they don't. I'm just wondering if if they do at all, particularly with the performance management element.
What do you mean awards? I'm sorry, Councilmember Williamson, do you mean like employee awards, things like that?
That's correct.
Right. I mean, we are looking at all aspects of our programs and policies. And I'm learning too as we're going along. And so what are things that we can and should be doing to to create inclusiveness? And if awards are part of that, and if there's something that we should be doing specific to that, we will be looking at that. So and then as far as performance management goes, we're looking at, you know, how are we giving performance evaluations? Do people feel comfortable about giving feedback to their supervisors, things like that? So making sure that in the performance management process, that we are creating an environment where people feel open and able and trusting to give that kind of feedback.
I know, since we're talking about the performance management piece, I have one kind of little follow-up. We've talked about this before, but if I understand correctly, employees that aren't up for a step increase aren't required to have a any value, a performance evaluation, is that still the case? And is that something that we're working towards, including to make sure that all employees are being evaluated?
We are working towards making sure all employees are evaluated. I will let you know that we were going to kick that off immediately. With the pandemic and all of the things that have been happening right now, we are, we're slowing it down just to make sure that we're doing it right. We want to make sure that we look at a model of performance management that's really effective. So yes, we are doing that. I imagine it will be happening within this year soon. And we're also having to pivot the way that we do performance management because we, so many of us are remote. So we're looking at now an online system that we're developing. We're not going out to vendors. We're trying to do it within the resources that we have just to make it easier for people to complete it and have the process, that, you know, the review process and things like that be done remotely if possible.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. And just to kind of express my appreciation for all the work that the HR department does. I mean, when you, when we think about, when we talk about the budget, really, a huge portion of our budget is going to personnel costs. So that's why I think it's really important for the council to be making sure that we're involved in in helping to influence this in a positive direction because I think there's a lot of opportunities here. But I think you're, you and your team are doing a great job. So I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
With the, Allison, with working at home, I think that's going to be a model that's going to exist after the pandemic pandemic is over. And getting out your crystal ball, what do you see the challenges and the opportunities there?
So, you know, I think we've been talking a lot about that as an executive team and within my department. I'm sure the other departments are talking about it as well. We've, I think we've seen some, some teams really be able to excel in this environment. And we want to figure out what it is that is that they're doing and model that across the city. So one of the things that we are actually doing as an executive team in a couple of weeks is working on how are we engaging our employees? How are we making sure that they're aware of what their job expectations are, whether or not they're meeting those expectations when they're at home, as well as when they're in the office? So how do we keep employees engaged and excited about the work that they're doing? And how do we also make sure that they're getting the coaching and feedback that they need to do that job when they're not in the office? So I think those are going to be some of the things we're going to be working on to to make sure that we're continuing to be effective while we are obviously, you know, maybe implementing some more flexibility at the conclusion of the pandemic and having that endure a bit in our city.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alan?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that is being done in HR. Allison, I think this is a good, good direction that you're taking. We want to make sure that the city is a welcoming and and a welcoming place for everybody who works here and that everyone feels respected and and that they're able to have their voice heard. So it sounds like you're going about it in a, in the right way. Do you anticipate at some point updating council on the progress that you're making? Like maybe sometime in the summer or any thoughts on that? Because I think we're going to be interested in seeing where this goes and how it gets implemented.
Absolutely. I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, comment?
Yes, Councilmember Ann.
Yeah, Allison, great, great to see you and Happy New Year and
Thank you.
for all the work you're doing. I know you've had a lion's share of work in 2020, sure. So I wanted to point out, and for anybody that's listening, the Wall Street Journal in Saturday's paper, the Weekend Edition, had a a great article on the home office and work productivity and workers coming back to the workplace or working at home. So the Weekend Edition of the Wall Street Journal was a good, a good article. So talks, talks a lot about a lot of the private sector and government and the impacts that we're going to see as we recalibrate.
Thank you for that. I will get into that.
Good, thank you. Let's, let's move on. I I notice we're getting down to about 18 minutes, so we'll want to keep moving here. And who's next, please? Library and museums.
The oldest library of the state of California, 1849, led by our capable library director, Inga Wade.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council and staff, members of the public. I'm delighted to be able to talk to you very quickly about some of the things that we're going to be working on this coming year. So the Museums and Cultural Arts Commission actually adopted a new strategic plan in July. And then the Library Board adopted new strategic priorities and initiatives in December. So it was challenging to try to consolidate this into just four quick bullet points, but I'll sort of give you the the highlights. So one of the biggest challenges is really looking at staffing, talking about kicking the can down the road. As Councilmember Williamson mentioned, we knew before the pandemic that we had budget issues in the city. And we were already looking at how could we staff more efficiently in the library? And we were already staffed very efficiently in the museums. So that's one of the things that I'm going to be working with our library board on and my library staff is, how can we do things differently with fewer folks? Even as the building reopens, we know we're not going back to the way things were prior to COVID. And one of the ways that we can achieve some efficiencies is with technologies. So I'm working with the Library Board on implementing some technology improvements. We're going to be implementing RFID, which will not only require fewer staff members for some of the library functions, but also enable customers, once they're in the building, to continue contact-free transactions as much as possible because we know that that is going to be a concern that our customers have. Funding and diversifying our funding streams remains a very big priority for us. I think we've had, just completed our most successful fundraising season ever since I've been with the library. And it's really thanks to our Friends Group, which became a foundation in January of 2020. They are really stepping up to try to raise funds for the library. And they're going to be kicking off a campaign shortly to try to raise funds for some of the services that we've lost funding for. Another thing is just how do we maintain essential services in this COVID climate? One of the things that has been really successful is we're doing virtual programs. One of the things that has been really successful is we're doing virtual programs. And I'm really proud of our staff in the library that we pivoted so quickly and started offering sidewalk service before any of the other libraries in the county were able to do so. And it's been hugely successful. We're going to start virtual tours of Colton Hall so that people don't forget about what a rich history we have in our community and continue our archival stewardship. And of course, maintaining access to collections, because that's one of the things that our our community really appreciates is access to materials. As far as reopening goes, so we follow, of course, the state guidelines and museums are not permitted yet to reopen. They're in the same group with aquariums. And but we do have a reopening plan. The Museums and Cultural Arts Commission prioritized which museums to reopen first. And Colton Hall was the top of the list, just because it's such an icon and so rich in history. And so there is a plan for how we would allow people to move through the building with minimal contact and in compliance and keeping a social distancing and so forth. But we're waiting, of course, for the pandemic to stop peaking and vaccine to come through and to have the green light to reopen museums. As far as the library goes, libraries can be open under the current state guidelines, but only at 25% capacity. And amazingly, with our sidewalk service, we are at 25% capacity. We're serving 250 people a day, circulating 550 items a day, 40% of those are children's materials. So our library board has a planning committee. And the planning committee did establish a reopening plan that had three major steps to it. We're at step 1.5 at this point. But given the health situation, we really think that we're at a pretty good holding point for now because it's contactless, the circulation that we're doing, we're doing virtual programs. And it seems to be a very safe level of service right now with the condition of the pandemic. So and of course, the renovating and repairs. So for museums, there are lots of ADA issues that we still need to look at and create plans for. With the library, of course, in October, we brought you our facility feasibility study. And but we know that right now that's sort of on the back burner because we don't have funding to make those improvements. And we just want to remind council that we still see it as a high priority. I know on the list that went out with the council packet, it was down there around priority number 91 or so. And there was some concern about that. We do want to make sure that as we're looking at other facilities in the city that need renovation and that we keep thinking about the library and how can perhaps, you know, a joint funding be done for a public service facility and a library and that sort of thing. So we want to make sure you don't forget about that building as well. And I think that's it.
Yeah, Inga, I hear from a lot of my church friends how much they appreciate the curbside service. So the public definitely appreciates that. Any questions, comments for Inga and the library at this point? Okay, I think one of the challenges going forward is it's going to be similar to at-home learning with online Zoom, Google Meet. I would imagine, as you well know, the library's been in transition anyway. The whole question of what materials do you keep? What does the public want? I would think it's probably an exciting time, but maybe a little bit scary too. What's the library going to look like in 10 years?
Right, well, our, when we did our surveys of the community, over and over again, they said they wanted physical materials. And we have seen the use of eBooks and e-materials increase. But people say they still want physical things in hand. And our virtual programs, our Zoom programs that we've been doing have been really well attended. Sometimes we have, you know, just a few folks. Sometimes we have 95 people at some of our programs. So it is an exciting time to sort of look at how we can do programs differently. And we think even once the facility does reopen, we will be continuing some programs in a virtual format.
Yes, and you and I think the shelter in places really highlighted, we're social beings and we like to be together. We want to be in a physical plant. And when I was on the library board, the whole idea of a community center, a place for people to gather is so important, way beyond books, et cetera.
Yeah.
You know what? We're we're looking at about 10 more minutes. And Hans, I want to suggest that if when we adjourn at 6, we do have a study session the fourth Wednesday of the month. And for that, what we don't get to tonight, this is very important, that anything else that we could discuss at our last study session in January, which would be January 27th, does that sound feasible? Works for everybody? Does that imagine?
That that would work for us, Mr. Mayor. I think before you close, I think you have to take public comments if I think I'm correct on that.
Yes, so I know we have parks in Rec. We're going to have lots of questions, police, other departments. So I certainly want to give them the opportunity to make a good presentation and this continue this really interesting discussion. So it might be good if the council agrees, we can continue this this meeting to our last meeting in January on the 27th at 4 o'clock. And we'll look forward to that. And meanwhile, let's see if there's public comment. If that sounds good, we'll go to public comment at this point so we can meet our our adjournment time.
Yeah, that sounds good for me.
Okay, good. Everybody's nodding. Excellent. And I know we have council comments and things like that. We'll just have to save those for our next meeting on the 19th. I can hardly wait. So do we have public comments now?
Yeah, let's let's take a look. We're just putting up the chyron now for public comment. And for those who've joined us on Zoom, we have a few attendees. Please virtually raise your hand by clicking the raised hand button. Or if you have called in, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. Otherwise, we'll we'll take, we'll close out the meeting today. We've got one and last three digits is 272. We'll let them talk. And if you could please unmute yourself by dialing star six, we can then hear you. Hi, welcome. If you could please state your your name and we'll start the timer.
Yes, this is Jeremy Mathias. I'm actually the owner of Medici on Alvarado Street in in Monterey. And I'm actually calling in to support Frank's proposal to set the caps on delivery services to 15%. Those would be the caps for commissions. And the reason for that is primarily, you know, with with the outdoor dining and indoor dining closed, around 50% of Medici sales are now delivery. And I know that's the case with many other restaurants. And just pay, continuing to pay 30% commission, commissions on these sales are really unmanageable. And I would just make three points about this initiative. One is that I actually have a petition signed by eight other restaurants on Alvarado Street. So the initiative actually has a lot of support. I would also mention that metropolitan areas across the United States have implemented these 15% caps on third-party delivery services, commissions, starting in the spring of last year. And actually, Santa Clara County just established these caps on December 15th of last year. As and and they they're following the lead of many other areas, metropolitan areas within California. And finally, I would I would just mention that the caps are temporary. So the way that Santa Clara County set them up would be they're set to expire when restaurants are permitted to resume indoor dining at full capacity. So, you know, in some, I, I, as well as many other owners of restaurants who I met to discuss the position, the petition would be happy to discuss it with anybody within city government. And, you know, really hoping that the the city will help provide us some relief over the the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you go, be sure you contact our city manager, Hans Suslar, and with your petition and your requests, that's the kind of follow up we can do. That kind of gets to the whole idea of reopening that we'll be talking about later. Do we have anybody else on that?
The no other callers and that's it. No other callers, no other raised hands.
Okay, any final comments, Hans? And then we'll get final comments from council.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To be continued.
Thank you. Council?
Just I'll have some comments on the 19th on the list and appreciate all the presentations we had so far. And sorry we had to continue the others, but we look forward to seeing seeing everybody else that's left on the 19th.
Oh, good, yeah. Yeah, well, I think this this was just amazing, I thought. Just so informative for those who've been around and live this every day. And I'm thinking of anyone who just wants to know how a good government works. I hope you've enjoyed this. Alan?
Yeah, I was just wondering if the city manager could let us know when he anticipates the RFPs for affordable housing projects that the city put out. When does he think that might be something we'll be looking at?
Okay, Adam, you can answer that now? Or do you want to just email this, Hans?
Yeah, I can answer that. We are checking back with the developers to ask some clarifying questions. And it will come back once we understand the proposals better to you into a closed session and which we present some of the the data points to you.
Okay, I I would just say, and since in the spirit of 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 this kind of dialogue, I don't think it should just be a closed session before, in my personal opinion, one council member's before the public session. I think when staff is ready, you really need to present in in public. And then we can get into details in closed session if there are concerns, but but that's just my view. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Tyler, a final comment?
So today happened a little bit different than I I thought, but I I liked it nonetheless. I agree with you, Mayor. It was nice to get that overview, and I think it's helpful to have these discussions. I'm just wondering if there could be more time dedicated for the council to have discussions on looking at our priorities and making sure that they're in alignment with what staff is, what they have on their plate, because I think that that can really get to the core of what I'm hearing a lot from staff, which is that they're getting tasked a lot of things from us. And I think it's a really important element. I think it ties in a little bit to to the idea of the of the calendar that Hans and Nat are now managing for us, the the annual calendar. And I would just bring up one more point that I'm hoping that maybe we can have a further discussion about. But last, not this past fall, but the previous fall, is when we came out with this idea of council putting things on the agenda during council comments to then just, if it was decided by the council to then put it on a later agenda. And I'm assuming I'm not, I in Alan, because Alan presented the the cannabis agenda item that way as well. But I'm assuming Alan and I aren't the the only ones that are pushing for things within the city. And I'm wondering if it's important that we're we're all utilizing this methodology that we came up with. So that way, we're in a way being, I think, maybe a little bit more transparent and we we understand where it's coming from. And we can try to find a way of developing some consistency as we mold this model and how we operate it. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out and maybe we can pick that up for further discussion at the next retreat.
Yeah, I look forward to that. Dan?
Yeah, a couple of things. I like to comment on that, Tyler. Yeah, I I agree that I think we do need to look at that procedure and maybe hone it down a little bit. I have some ideas, because when we presented it, I think a year ago, it wasn't quite what I intended it to be when I presented it or when I wanted to to see. I just wanted to make sure that items got on the the agenda. And sometimes they they get lost. So I would I would agree with you, Tyler. I'd like to see that as a as an agenda item of some type. The other thing I wanted to mention is Inga brought up a good point. This this list of 92 priorities this staff has brought up, it's out in the public now. And I want I want the public to understand that it, as the city manager mentioned, that it's not so much a priority list, it's just a list of what we see as things that are happening in our city. And that even if the items that some people are are passionate about are down in the 70s and 80s and 90s, doesn't necessarily mean that those items are a priority. That's what I I look forward to talking about. What I would like to see on that list, if it's not too much trouble for the the staff, is each individual item, what is, which department is responsible for that item? I'd like to see a column, because I I know of multiple items, some of those items have multiple departments. But it would be very, I'd be very curious to see who's responsible for those items. So that's my comments, Mayor.
Mayor, if I could just follow up on on Dan's comments real quick. The the first one, and Mayor, you were actually, I think you were the one that that shared this idea with me. And it's just kind of putting it out there so it's part of the discourse. But the idea was that maybe we only propose, when councils proposing agenda items, that maybe it's only during during the study sessions, right? So I think that gets to what you're talking about, Dan, as far as ways that we can kind of fine tune that. And then in regards to your suggestion for the the work, the staff work plan, maybe it can be, and I'm just throwing this out because it might help make it easier. Sometimes there's multiple departments that are have that for action. So maybe there could be a key and a letter could be given so that way it's easier and right? So I'm just throwing that out to maybe help staff kind of think about that idea.
We don't really want to get into discussion on this. This is not an agenda item. Ed, a final comment? I think you've commented earlier.
No, I have no other comments. I just want to add that I think that the governance policy that we're talking about, Tyler and Dan both mentioned, I frankly, I've got to pull it up and read it again. And I'll be prepared at some future date to talk about that. But I think it's important that we acknowledge that there's a differentiation between the public and the closed session and the purpose why we have a closed session. But whatever business we can do in the public is my preference. And statutory requirements to go into closed session, I support that. So, you know, I don't think we're creating anything new. I think we're just talking about, you know, the dance and the moves to make sure that we're in compliance with the governance policy.
Yeah, and it's always good to review those things. And so and it's very important that the council and the staff have the same priorities. There's a unique thought, right? Hey, good night, everybody. I look forward to seeing you on the 19th at a regular council meeting and continuing our reports from our outstanding stellar staff members who didn't get to speak. So they're going to have a lot of fun on the 27th as we continue this workshop. Have a good evening, everybody.